Call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for Tuesday, June 17th of 2025. Ms. T, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quidno?
Here.
Mr. Koots?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is correction and acceptance of the city council minutes from our last meeting of June 3rd. Are there any corrections or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will accept those into our record. Our next item is Board and Committee reports. So we have a lot of minutes. I'm not going to list them all, but they are all listed in the agenda and provided for people to review. So are there any questions or comments regarding the Board and Committee minutes? Greg?
Two questions. One, in the Parks Board meetings, it was referring to Exhibit A and B, which stated it was included, but it was not included. Could we get that in the future?
Yes, I will make sure that that happens. I'm not sure how it got dropped.
Yep.
And then, the library. I think the last time this happened, I asked, is there a way that we can get reports more often? In this situation, it's a year and nine months later, and we get, what is that, 12 times nine? So we're getting 21 reports. Is there a way we can get reports more regular? I'm not sure who.
Sure, I can talk to the people and make sure that we get those submitted more timely.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the Parks Board exhibits that are missing? Is that something that we need to pull from the minutes, the reports, and then resubmit with the attachments to make sure that it's an official record?
We can. I don't think it's required, no.
Okay, thanks.
They'll just be attached with the official minutes.
Okay.
So I guess, one of the things you're asking is, I could make an extra step and go to the Parks Board Agenda Item and probably find Exhibit A and B?
Yes, and I was just...
I understand.
Yeah, but I was thinking for the purpose of what we are doing as a council, if it to make the official, record official, if they were missing, should we just resubmit them? That was my question, but it sounds like we're okay. But if you would like, I'd be happy to send those to you.
Could you?
I sure will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary, I have a question about the Parks Board minutes from May 12th. There is a discussion of the fee schedule, and there was some specific conversation noted about seasonal lift prices and raising the charge for that for, I think it's the winter storage. And my question is not about that action, but just wondering, is seasonal bolt lift storage one of the recreational topics that the Parks Board is evaluating in their work that they're doing for us?
Yes, we are looking at moving from lift to slips, and what count, what purpose, what cost, or what rate we would entertain as a part of the offerings for, I consider recreation, and sporting as a rec sport. So yes, that is a part of the discussion.
Okay, thanks. That, you know, I guess, and I hopefully other council members agree, I think we did not ask the Parks Board to look at the parking lot issues per se, but to the extent that there's recreational activities that make use of parts of the parking lot, I do think that's something I would like to hear from the Parks Board on, so.
Okay, thanks. I will make sure that we cover that.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments on the Board and Committee minutes? Okay, we'll accept all of these into the public record then. And I guess this is as good a time as any to note that we're, we have a slightly modified standard agenda that hopefully people have noticed. And so if ever there is a Board or Committee Chair that wants to make a verbal report to us, this would be the opportunity on our agenda that they could do that. So, you know, from time to time, we may have that as well. Okay, on to item number six, which is correspondence and constituent contacts. Michelle, would you like to start us out?
Sure. I had a lovely phone call with a constituent regarding the Sandy Beach decision and/or thought on what we are doing with the Mobile Home area. I got an email from a Jefferson County representative, as well as several emails about Milton Street.
Great. Greg Waters?
I also had correspondence on Milton Street, the Mobile Home Park as well. Received crash data on the Milton Street area, and had, I got stopped while I was mowing the yard. Somebody was talking about the digger at Rotary Park. So I took the opportunity to do a little bit of a drive around tonight before I came in here, and I noticed that Memorial Park has their playground up and going. It's very beautiful, looks nice. The new, I'm gonna say refuge, but the drop off for the yard waste area is up and running. There's a huge sign that says absolutely no contractors. Got my attention right away. And I drove by the old site, and I see how that's all barricaded off. And it looks like no one's dropping off there at this point, or at least it was clean when I went by. And yeah, I did see the digger needs to be fixed at Rotary Park. But yeah, it was a nice drive around, a lot of good things happening, so.
Thanks. Mary?
So I also received Mobile Home Park inquiries, Milton Street safety, and other correspondence on that topic. Also, one on pickleball courts and the Rock Lake water levels. They have not yet reached summer minimum. Just for the record.
Greg Koots?
Nothing new to add.
Okay, I received most of those, Milton and Sandy Beach contacts. And the only other thing I would add is I attended the Joint Rock Lake Committee meeting last week, and they have several new committee members. So it was nice to see new people getting engaged, and we'll look forward to what they come up with for projects that they would like to work on, and certainly if we have issues that, you know, where we are looking for a committee to work on related to the lake, they're available to us. Okay, our next item is public comment. And people might remember, we did a little bit of ordinance change and changed our procedures a little bit for public comments. So the paragraph is a little bit different, and we have an updated sign-in sheet that asks people to register five minutes ahead of the meeting, so that then the presiding officer can call on people. So I've got the signup list. It looks like everybody who's here tonight would like to speak on Milton Street. So I'll just read briefly the paragraph from our agenda, and then we can take people's comments. So individuals who have registered to speak are invited to address the council at this time. Please state your name and address when you're called on to make your comments. No action will be taken for items not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. So first we have JB Clark, and then after JB is going to be Abby.
Hello, JB Clark of Milton Street. My neighbors and I are back tonight.
I'm sorry, could you turn the microphone on, please?
Oh, you got the green light, then you're good.
Better?
Thank you.
Hi, JB Clark of 122 Milton Street. My neighbors and I are back tonight in response to City Manager Drake Daly's memo urging you not to adopt speed humps on Milton Street. I've written a letter in response to his memo, and it's only a page long. I would encourage you to please read that. But since I only have a meager three minutes to speak, I'll focus on three main points. First, I think the memo does an outstanding job of illustrating why my neighbors and I feel that Drake Daly and his team are simply not listening to us. You'll note that the memo does not in any way, shape, or form refute anything that we told you at the last city council meeting regarding the hazards on Milton Street. Instead, he continues to cite the speed-based warrant criterion that we've already explained does not accurately reflect these traffic hazards. Second, by leading with the $50,000 estimate for installing a series of speed humps slash tables, he's making no effort to distinguish between the costs of the less expensive speed humps and the $50,000 speed tables. This would appear to be an effort to inflate the perceived costs to discourage the city council from considering what we are actually asking for, which is the more cost-effective speed humps. And third, he suggests that if you're going to acquiesce to the residents of Milton Street who are asking you to install these speed humps, you should just build them with a special assessment. But I'd ask you to consider, are the residents of Milton Street responsible for creating this hazard? No, it's just the coincidence that we happen to be the thoroughfare for traffic going to and from both of our city's high schools. That is the unique situation that is creating these hazards. And it might be worth stepping back for a moment to consider motive here and liability. Who is it that will be liable in this situation? For a group who have such a powerful voice on the matter, Drake Daly and his team share absolutely none of the liability if a reckless driver strikes and kills a pedestrian on Milton Street. If there is a multimillion-dollar judgment or settlement, they will be completely immune. This is why they can afford to be so cavalier about leaving these hazards unaddressed. But I'll tell you who would not escape liability. It's the citizens of Lake Mills, and not just the ones on Milton Street. This is why I am asking you, on behalf of the citizens of Lake Mills, and not just my neighbors, to please direct our city manager to install a series of speed humps on Milton Street. Thank you.
Thank you. So Abby, I'm not sure I pronounced it, Peabone, and then Jonathan Peabone will be next.
Hello again. My name's Abby Peabone, and I live at 136 Milton Street. I'm here with my neighbors again today to express our request for the city to take action on finding a solution to the safety concerns on our street. We reviewed the memo sent to you last week Friday, and we were just disappointed to find our concerns as residents to be excluded from the conversation. The City of Lake Mills' mission statement is as follows, I'm sure you all know this, but to set policy and enact legislation that facilitate the public safety, health, and welfare of its citizens. The mission also states a strong drive to be a vibrant community and to build strong and positive relationships between the city government and its citizens. Very simply put, that's exactly what we're trying to do as a group of neighbors that are really passionate about our community and keeping it safe. On a personal note, my husband and I actually moved away from Lake Mills a few years ago, and we missed it so much that we moved our family back last year and very luckily landed on Milton Street. I know so many of us in this room know what I'm talking about when I say how grateful we are to feel part of a community that looks out for one another and works together. A community happens on our front lawns, with our kids playing on the sidewalks, running from house to house. Unsafe driving behaviors and a high volume of traffic on our street do make these things more difficult to achieve. It's important to note that our street, like JB just said, is very unique in its location and proximity to both high schools, as well as being the exit cross-street from Caitlin Drive, as you know. While we hear it being said in the memo that no other residential street has traffic calming measures in place currently in Lake Mills, we urge the city to recognize that no other residential street in Lake Mills experiences the volume of traffic that Milton Street does as a result of being used as a main route to and from both high schools. Milton Street's location, the volume of traffic it experiences, and the fact that such a high proportion of the drivers using our street are younger and less experienced drivers create a unique need for additional speed calming measures. The following are the Federal Highway Administration and Department of Transportation's guidelines for where appropriate application of a speed hump, for example, would be applicable. Appropriate for a residential local street that provides access to a school, park, or community center. Appropriate if the speed limit is 30 miles an hour or less. Not appropriate if the street is a primary emergency vehicle route, or the street provides access to a hospital or emergency medical services. And we qualify for all of those. They also state that the effects of a series of speed humps are actually the most effective way to reduce speeds than any other traffic calming measure. All we ask is for safety measures to please be implemented in a cost-effective way that will benefit not only us residents, but equally the teen drivers, school employees, bus drivers, police force, and city alike. We want to work together. We care deeply about this issue, and thank you so much for your time to hear our concerns again tonight.
Thank you. So Jonathan Peabone, and then next will be Erin Clark.
Good evening, council. My name is Jonathan, and I live at Milton Street, a street that has instilled fear in our neighborhood community. Tonight I stand before you as a voice that will hopefully capture your ears and hearts, hearts that I believe are similar to our own. Ours beat with every, ours beat with every fear, with fear every time we hear a sound of a racing engine going through our neighborhood, a fear that should not exist in a place we call home, especially near, being near to two schools. We presented the facts. My neighbors have had much conversation with the schools, the city, our police about the issues far before me and my wife, my wife and I moved onto the street last week, last year, excuse me. We've brought you evidence of the danger, including our collective experience. It's our eyewitness accounts. We have no reason to raise these concerns if they were not real. Yes, we were informed that a speed study was conducted, but let's be honest about that study. We know that when people see the speed traps, they slow down when they know that their speeds are being watched. That study does not reflect what we experience, the true consistent speeding that happens when the cameras are not rolling. Growing up in New York City, I learned at a young age that the, that feeling of hearing the sound of screeching tires that makes your heart stop, that feeling, that feeling never goes away, likely, likely more so for me as I was actually hit by a car while crossing the street once before at the age of 11. Council, I believe that the decision to install speed calming measures on Milton Street should be straightforward and a matter of clear moral responsibility. We ask you to look within and see our shared humanity. Know that if we were, know that if you were the one in need, I would do everything possible to keep our citizens safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Erin Clark, and then Shannon, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, Gaynor, I think.
Hi, my name is Erin Clark, and I live at 122 Milton Street. After our neighborhood spoke at the last council meeting, I felt hopeful that together we would be able to come up with a common sense solution to our continued known issue of traffic on Milton Street. Unfortunately, after reading the statement put forth by the city manager, chief of police, director of public works, and others, and left puzzled as to why there seems to be such pushback from these individuals to create a safer street. The statement continues to refer to the speed study conducted, but as we spoke about at length during the last meeting, it fails to reflect the daily, day-to-day experiences that we as residents have on the street. During the last council meeting, a member of the council even spoke to understanding and experiencing what we are outlining. For my time, I'd like to focus on some solutions. We agree with Mr. Daly that there are a number of possible options that would not be helpful. We encourage the city council to rule out the curb extensions and narrowing of the street, as these measures are cross-prohibitive, less effective, and could jeopardize grant funding for the Milton Street project. When city council members toured Milton Street in 2023, prior to planning the project, they shared with residents that grant funding would be lost if the street were to be narrowed. We also agree that speed tables are not a logical solution, as their design does not effectively slow traffic below 30 miles per hour, and they are cost prohibitive. We acknowledge that reversing the traffic flow on Catlin Drive would negatively impact the public high school. There are a number of options we believe would make a significant impact. We strongly agree with Mr. Daly that cars exiting the public high school parking should only be allowed to turn left or right out of Catlin Drive, instead of being allowed to cross Main Street and drive down Milton. While this measure would not eliminate the speeding that occurs to the way of the public high school in Lakeside in the mornings, or traffic leaving Lakeside in the afternoons, it is a helpful step in the right direction and likely to reduce some of the problem. We strongly agree that Mr. Daly, that lowering the speed limit to 15 miles per hour in Milton Street should be considered. However, it is important to note that this measure only works if young, impulsive drivers follow the speed limit, which we see clearly is not happening already. We strongly believe that speed humps are the effective compromise here. They're designed to effectively limit the speed limit of drivers and reduce reckless driving behavior, as well as allow for snow plowing in the winter. We'd like the city to please seek out an itemized estimates for the cost of permanent speed hump option. While we acknowledge that temporary options are available, we wonder what the long-term costs would be. Mr. Daly wrote in his statement that temporary options are expected to last three to seven years. A temporary option also requires city staff to direct or the resources installing and uninstalling the speed humps each fall and spring. Removing traffic calming features at certain times of the year would also logically require more police presence at peak traffic times, taking scarce resources from what we understand there is already a shortage of. At what point does it make sense to simply install a permanent solution that doesn't require yearly input by staff? And a short note about the debt that was mentioned in the statement, it was our desire to be part of the planning process, so additional change order costs would not be incurred, but that failed to happen despite our continued efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Shannon, and then Sarah Clement.
Hi, I'm Shannon Gaynor at 603 South Main Street. Good evening, council members, and thanks for hearing what we have to say tonight. A couple of things to piggyback off of what Erin was talking about. We wanted to comment on the memo which reports one accident, but not all accidents have been reported to the police. For example, Laura had her, a car went over the curb, Robbie had his car sideswiped, and the mirror broken off. Sarah was rear-ended on Milton Street in Maine. Sarah also witnessed mail carrier nearly hit, and Diane had to pull her dog and herself out of the street to avoid a car. It was also suggested in the memo that speed humps would delay emergency vehicles, but we want to point out that with the preventative measures, this could decrease the likelihood that an ambulance would need to visit our street at all. Ambulances and fire trucks would already have to slow down to turn onto Milton and would not be accelerating afterward. They would be pulling over to whichever residence they are headed to. If still concerned, these concerns can be addressed with speed cushions, which have cutouts in the speed hump that are wide enough apart to allow emergency vehicles to pass through them, but still inhibit speeding from cars and trucks. Lastly, I just want to say that we are grateful for the opportunity to participate in the public comments, and for the council's willingness to add our concerns to this agenda. We want to emphasize our desire to work with the city in a spirit of collaboration. We don't want conflict. We don't want to delay the street reconstruction project, and we share the city's desire to limit additional expenses wherever possible. We would like to help our community avoid a tragedy, and we would like to help the city avoid the risk of being held liable if such an event were to occur. We are trying to anticipate in advance any concerns and barriers that might be brought up by city staff members, and being limited to a three-minute monologue in the public comment portion of this meeting makes it pretty difficult to engage in effective collaboration and problem, problem solving. Therefore, we would like an opportunity to engage in a conversation with the city council and city staff members, to reach a mutual understanding of the nature of the problem and identify solutions that are agreeable to all parties. The lived experience of our, of ourselves on Milton Street gives us unique insights into the nature of the problem, and that's why we are here tonight in full capacity. Thanks for listening to us tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Sarah Clement, and then Lynn Cleghorn will be next.
Hello, I'm Sarah Clement. My family and I live at 116 Milton Street. I'm also here to express my support in urging the city to consider speed humps as a traffic calming measure on our street. I want to specifically address the speed study that was completed, because I feel like it is the primary reason being used to suggest that the speed humps aren't needed on our street. And while we appreciate the need to complete a speed study and the city's efforts to study the traffic patterns on our street, the data was collected during only one short-term window, as compared to the lived experience of residents that's happened over decades. There was also no effort within the speed study to account for multiple confounding variables, and the dataset is therefore weak and not sufficient for ruling out the need for speed calming measures. So some of those confounding variables are the very obvious fact that driver behavior is much more conservative when speed monitoring devices or police cars are present. When, when these measures are removed, the speeding and reckless behavior immediately resume. The speed study also doesn't capture the nature of the problem, which is largely the rapid acceleration as high schoolers shoot across the Main Street, failure to stop at stop signs, attempts to pass or block each other, tailgating, et cetera. Most of these happen at the ends of the streets, not in the center, the middle of the street where the speed tracking device was placed. When Ferry Drive was resurfaced, I think we all noticed that speeding increased on the newer, smoother roads, and we think it's reasonable to expect that a similar effect will happen on Milton Street when we no longer have all of these potholes acting as natural speed bumps. The data from the speed survey does, however, show that our street's position between the two high schools results in our street experiencing significantly more vehicular traffic than most residential streets in Lake Mills. Over 11,000 cars passed on our street in that 16-day period. The sheer volume of traffic, combined with the fact that many of those drivers are newer drivers in their teenage years with limited driving experience, more impulsivity, and less developed judgment, all put our residents at increased risk compared to other streets. The speed study also shows that multiple drivers were driving at speeds higher than 40 miles per hour on a residential street, which is an extremely high and unsafe rate of speed, especially on a residential street. This was in spite of the presence of those speed monitors and police cars, which would normally cause most drivers to be more cautious than they normally would be. So you can imagine the speeds we see when those measures aren't there. Even one instance of this type of reckless speeding poses a significant risk to the children and vulnerable individuals on our street. Per guidelines from the Federal Highway Administration, speed effects of a singular or series of speed humps are greater than any other traffic calming measure. Speed humps produce sufficient discomfort to a motorist driving above the speed hump design, design speed to discourage speeding. I also wanted to point out Madison and a lot of other cities are following the 20 is plenty campaign, and I passed out a small printout from them, because I think there's a really powerful graphic that shows the difference that even 10 miles per hour makes in the event of an accident. So a car traveling at 20 miles per hour takes 115 feet to come to a full stop. Pedestrians hit at this speed face a 13% likelihood of fatality or severe injury. When we go up just 10 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour, it takes 200 feet to come to a stop. Pedestrians face a 40% likelihood of fatality or, or severe injury. When that speed is 40 miles per hour, it takes 305 feet to come to a stop, and there is a 73% likelihood of fatality or severe injury.
That's three minutes here, so please wrap it up.
Thank you.
So we have Lynn Cleghorn, and then Charlie Pinkney.
Hi, city council members, and Drake Daly. My name is Lynn Cleghorn. My husband, Peter Kershawfer, and I reside at 523 South Main Street. It's on the corner of Main and Milton. We've lived there since 1994. A few years after taking up residence, a horrible tragedy shook Lake Mills. A little seven-year-old boy, Christopher Berg, was struck by a car on Mulberry Street and killed. Christopher ran out between parked cars. The driver was a young woman, and she was deemed not at fault. The children were on their way to school when the accident occurred, and there were lots of witnesses. Since this tragedy, crossing guards have been positioned on Mulberry Street, but it was after the fact, and we don't want to experience a horrible tragedy like that. The loss of one life is one life to many. Let's be proactive and not reactive to the warning signs presented by the Milton Street residents. Just because there currently aren't speed humps on our city streets doesn't mean we shouldn't install them, temporary or permanent. Our block is unique in that we field car and bus traffic between two high schools. Speed humps coupled with reduced speed limit and redirection of the existing traffic pattern to right and left turns only at the high school would definitely make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person signed up is Charlie.
Hello, I'm Charles Pinkney. I live at 161 Milton Street. And I'd simply like to reiterate that the conditions, traffic conditions on Milton Street present a special circumstance that deserves special consideration. I don't know of any other place in town that's quite so critical. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I hope you'll think again about this issue.
Thank you. Okay, that's everyone who has signed up for public comment tonight. Thank you. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, which is our city manager's report, and we have our monthly financials and some other reports. Drake, anything that you would like to highlight?
I would just call attention to the Juno utility letter that we received. This was in response to the significant weather event within Juno that knocked out power for a majority of their community. And our community is one of the ones that responded in mutual aid to restore power to the majority of their city within 24 hours, which was several days ahead of schedule. So if you happen to see one of our linemen, please make a point to thank them, and they're a, I would, I would argue the best line crew in Jefferson County, and I think we're very lucky to have them.
Thank you for highlighting that. And I know the Public Works Board got to see some pictures from some of the work that the linemen were doing. some pictures from some of the work that the linemen were doing up there as well. So that was nice to be able to see, you know, to envision the work and how dangerous it is, and, but to get people back in power is really, really wonderful. Any questions or comments on any of the reports that we have this evening?
On, on the police report, I noticed a, a comment towards the end, and I'm sure the chief is going to cringe, but it's kind of cool to, to see some of the accomplishments that some of our staff members make in a 25 and a half mile hike was, was quite, quite neat to see that, and I wish I could have went with them, actually, but it is kind of nice to see staff accomplishments, so I just wanted to point that out.
I guess one other thing I'd like to make a comment on is the Ryan Brothers ambulance report, and they highlighted a lot of partners who are involved in responding in emergency situations, and we had an unfortunate tragedy on the interstate, you know, in our community not too long ago, and a lot of partners were involved in responding to that. So I appreciate them calling that out, and I thank all those partners as well for looking after our community. Okay, any other comments on the reports that we have? I'm not seeing any, so we will go to council business. Our first item is the consent agenda. We have a couple of license applications, so if anyone wants to discuss any of those, you can identify that now. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items one and two.
Mr. Coats will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Mr. Coats. Misty, please call the roll.
Ms. Schmager.
Aye.
Ms. Quedno.
Aye.
Mr. Coats.
Aye.
Mr. Waters.
Aye.
Ms. Curler.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Ordinance 1276. This is the second reading of that tonight, so Misty, would you please do the second reading?
Ordinance 1276, admitting City of Lake Mills ordinance section 660-44 sub 8. Official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 24607132311017. Property address 1219 South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Owner is Lake Mills Feeding Grain Inc.
Thank you. So normally, we have a three readings for every ordinance, so this would be carried forward to our next agenda for the third reading. Our representatives from Byda Plus are here again this evening. Does anybody, sorry, Lake Mills Feeding Grain, does anyone have any questions or comments for them this evening?
I have a question. I was reflecting on the memo from the planning commission that documented that we did not have an apparatus to reach the height of the proposed addition for fire, and I wanted just to confirm that there isn't going to be an expectation for the city from the insurance company that handles that particular company's coverages that would expect us to invest in a new machine.
The amount, the apparatus we have factors into our ISO rating, which is ultimately translates to insurance rates that property owners pay within the city. We don't have a piece of apparatus that can reach the current height of the app, the structure that they have out there currently, and so it's more, it's a matter of degree and a matter of time. The, the operators, the owners have said this is not, it's not a manned station, so they will be up for maintenance generally if, when, and if it needs to occur, but it is not a staffed area.
Okay.
But in the event that something were to occur today, our ladder truck would not be able to reach the height that it's currently at. So it would be a rescue operation up the steps that they have. It will be, they will have stairs up to the top of it, and that is just how the, the fire department would respond.
Oh, thank you. It read as if it was a new problem, so it's been something, a problem, a new observation, so thank you for clarifying that.
It just increases the degree to which, that we can't reach.
Response. Yes, thank you. Thanks, appreciate that.
Any other comments this evening? Okay, then we'll carry that forward for the third reading at our next council meeting in, in beginning of July. Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 25-37. Misty, would you read that for us, please?
City Council Resolution 25-37, authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report to the state of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, I know we have our wastewater foreman, Bill Keesling, here tonight. Drake, do you want to kick this off, or do we have Bill come up and speak?
This is an annual approval. The Public Works Board did recommend approval. Staff is here to answer questions or to go through it if you'd like. That's, you're up to the council's wishes.
Well, since Bill took the time to come here, I'd, I'd love it if he would just come up and, and identify any highlights in the report, and so we can compliment him on the score.
All right, yeah. I guess you've all probably looked at the report, and there, it's, it's all As. I mean, the grades are very good. The biggest change, I guess I see, is that we've had some, some staffing issues in the past, like everybody has, and I think we, we largely put those behind us. We've got a really great crew. As a matter of fact, as I was coming to this meeting, I came in by the plant, and two of them were in right now going to work on a lift station on Ferry Drive that was not operating correctly. So we've, I've got three people with experience that are very good, and they're getting all their licensing taken care of. I've got one that's already retained all their advanced licensing, so that if something were to happen to me, the city's still got somebody to operate the plant who's qualified to do so. And things are, things are really looking up in the staffing department, I would say. We've also hired a young gentleman who seems like a go-getter, and we're getting him up and ready. So I'm very excited about my staff as I was last year, I guess, so that continues. As you know, we're looking at options for new treatment plant or rebuilding our existing plant, and that's in the works with our engineer currently, and that's going to be exciting, too. So I don't know if any of you have any questions for me, but other than that, the report is all As, and we did well, so.
Great. I have a, a comment. I was on Public Works last year, so I did hear about your staffing issues, and just wanted to congratulate you on the report. I, I don't know if it's a perfect report. Maybe it is, because I don't see any negatives on it. So congratulations for achieving such a high standard. I'm sure the people of Lake Mills don't think much of wastewater treatment in, in their normal conversations, but it's nice to know that it's being handled properly. So thank you for, for all your efforts.
Thank you.
And your staff.
Thank you, yeah. A lot of credit goes to them for this report being as good as it is. They, you know, put in the hours and do the work, so.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Bill, I, I do have one. I guess I would just like to ask if you could talk a little bit more about infiltration inflow. I know that's always a challenge, trying to identify where excess, you know, is coming into the system that then you have to deal with, but how do you think that's going, and will you be able to make more progress on finding those sources?
Sure. I mean, within the past few years, we've gotten pretty good televising equipment, so we're televising more sewers, and we're finding, unfortunately, more things wrong. And we're fixing those as we do. There, there are some leaks or pipes that have leaks and issues in our system. Obviously, we have, the system we have around the lake, the way the city lays out, we have a lot of wet areas that are going to be prone to inflow and infiltration, and the infiltration is just for everybody's benefit, water that's leaking through joints in the pipes underground. And inflow is things like a hole in the pipe, or somebody's sump pump in their basement that's tied into the sanitary sewer, things like that. And there's probably a lot of areas where there's basins and kettles, and it's hard for people to get the water out. So I, I have suspicion that there's quite a few sump pumps out there that are tied into our system, and there may come a point where we want to look at those. I think it's been brought up in the past, and it wasn't received with enthusiasm, maybe I would say. But, but we'll continue to look for things like open pickholes on manholes. We try to put ceiling covers on. Things like in new construction, we're replacing sewer laterals to the property line. That's really a good policy. I think going forward, there's, there's talk that at some, you know, not just in Lake Mills, but statewide, that at some point, we may have to address the second half of that lateral going. You know, if we fix it to the property line and it's still leaking all the way up to the house, it's kind of like the LSLs or the lead service laterals. You know, we can fix our half, but if people don't fix their half, then it doesn't solve the whole problem. So, I mean, we're, we're being proactive. I think every community's got inflow and infiltrate, infiltration problems. You hear or read about Milwaukee releasing sewage to the, to the lake, and that's because if they let it come through their system, it would wash out their whole biological process. So they don't have a choice but to release it. They just don't have the capacity. So Lake Mills is not in bad shape. We're, we're doing pretty well. We just, we'll continue. I think I'm seeing less inflow and infiltration now that half in years pass, but as you continue to spend money on it, you get a diminishing return if you're not going to eventually go after the, probably the, the connections that are within the homes. So, something to think about.
Yeah. Thank you very much for, for talking us through that. Any other comments or questions? And I'll echo Mr. Waters' comments. Thank you to you and your, and your crew. Thank you for your many years of expertise in this and, and teaching a, a new group of folks to do this important work, and As across the board in all the sections in your report. So if there's no other comments or questions, then we need a motion on Resolution 25-37.
I will move to approve Resolution 25-37, authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Ms. Quedno. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Quedno.
Aye.
Mr. Coats.
Aye.
Mr. Waters.
Aye.
Ms. Curler.
Aye.
Ms. Schmager.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thanks again, Bill.
Yep. Sorry if I was long-winded, but I'm probably the only one in the room that gets excited about cities.
It's your once-in-a-year chance, so, no problem. Okay, our next agenda item, letter D, is consideration and possible action on traffic calming options on Milton Street. And of course, we've heard a public comment this evening and at our last meeting, and I think we've received some correspondence, and we have a number of documents from staff. So Drake, I'll turn it over you to, to kick things off.
I guess I would ask the council if there's questions or what they would like to hear additional information on. Design features, you'll need to make a decision tonight so that we can design and request a change order from the, from the contractor. The cost estimate that's been referenced tonight is, is as always, a conservative cost estimate that we bring to you for the highest possible cost that we're anticipating. We can only, we only had so much time to put information together, and so we asked the contractor for a preliminary cost estimate of the more expensive options, which is a speed table, which is going to be about $17,000 per speed table. By three, that takes you over $50,000. That does not include the design costs associated with it. We would expect speed humps to be a lower cost, but you will have to, whatever change order you request will have to be approved by this council, and so you'll have to approve the exact dollar amount that comes before you if you request a change order. They have, Milton Street has started the project. They will begin with sewer. So what we need, what we need to do is we need to be able to design and get the change order approved before they begin, depending which option you select, before, ideally before they begin water main, certainly before they begin pavement. There is time, there, there may be additional time, because if they were to install a, a speed hump on the road, they will be, they'll still be paving the entire road as they're contracted to do, and then they'll cut and install where they're designed to be put. So we, maximum, if you stick with the minimum spacing requirements of speed humps, is, you can, you may be able to fit three. It has to be designed, but if you, 150 feet from an intersection, that, what, 250 feet between them, I think, was, was the standard. It's a 950-foot length of roadway, so when you factor in the 150 feet on either side of the intersection, you can likely fit, you may be able to fit three. Chief Schroeder is here. If you have questions of him regarding the speed study, if you, if you desire to special assess, you should make it known in your, your intent in your motion. That would be required of you. That kicks off a separate process. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have some questions for Chief Schroder, so I was wondering if he could come up and walk us through some of the data that we've received. Good evening. Thank you for being here. So attached to our agenda, we have the traffic survey that was done last year, and then an excerpt from certain hours of the day, and then we also have some crash maps, and I wonder if you could just summarize the study and then the crash, crash data for us.
Sure. I'll start very briefly by what prompted the study, and we call it a study because it's data that's collected by our speed board, so it essentially analyzes traffic flow numbers as well as traffic speeds. In January of 2023, I had a complaint from a resident, I don't believe she's here, I don't think we heard from her tonight, about the speed on Milton Street. To date, that's the only contact I have had from any resident on Milton Street related to speed on that street. As a response to that phone call in January of '23, I not only had my staff start to monitor the speed in the area, but once the spring arrived and we had the speed board out of storage, we put it out there from late April through early May. So that's the speed study or speed data that I have that I presented to you. Do you want me to go into specifics of the numbers, or, or I guess what?
No, I don't think you need to. We, we do have that data, but I think Drake's memo kind of summarizes like the 85th percentile and things like that, so we do have that.
That was what prompted the speed board being placed out there and gathering the data. It's this data that we keep. I went back and ran a couple numbers and double-checked to confirm I haven't received another complaint of speed in that area. I've noted that our officers have specifically logged school zone patrols either in the morning, school traffic time, or the afternoon school traffic time on 22 occasions in the area of Milton Street and/or right at Ferry Drive in Milton Street, which is monitoring both. The crash data that I provided, I went, I used a resource called Community Maps, which is available to the public. It's data gathered by the Traffic Safety, or TOPS Lab, they call it, at UW-Madison. I went back for a three-year period and saw that there was one crash on Milton Street. It was a rear-end crash, and it was listed as adverse weather conditions as a factor. It happened between 11:00 AM and 11:59 AM. Today, I actually went back to January 1st of 2020 just to see if there was any more data or crashes, and that remains the only crash in the last five and a half years on Milton Street. I can't speak to almost crashes that were mentioned or close calls, again, because if I'm not notified or my staff are not notified of something, I'm not aware that there's a problem. I guess that's a quick synopsis of the crash data and the speed data and the efforts that the police department has taken. If there's other specific questions, I am certainly happy to answer them.
Maybe just a follow-up on the enforcement. It sounded like you said that officers have logged specifically during school times, patrolling in that area. Is that right? So is that because of calls, or is that just the nature of, you know, there's a lot of traffic flow in those areas?
We routinely do, routinely do what we call school zone patrol. So in the mornings, at times when students are traveling to school, and in the afternoons, after school lets out, we try to focus our patrol on areas around the schools. So that's around all of our schools, and then obviously the different roads that are around them. of our schools, and then obviously the different roads that are around them. The 22 school zone patrols in the area of Milton Street that I mentioned were specifically targeting that area on those occasions.
Okay. So, these school zone patrols could be at any of our intermediate school or elementary school or around the community. Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Yeah, please.
Specifically, are we talking about during school hours? Are we talking about after school is let out or before school is, is, has begun?
So, between 7:30 and 8:00 AM normally, when we have the highest traffic flow going to school, and then immediately after school lets out are the times that we're logging an actual school zone patrol.
Okay.
Regarding the study that was completed on Milton, I'm curious if a comparable study was done on West Lake Park Place. Trying to understand the volume, 700, on average, 700 seems very high for a small city road. And I know, I live on South Ferry, and so I, like some of the citizens who've talked about today, see a significant, we call it the racetrack because we're on the curve. It is, it is a, a very, it's an obvious increase in traffic counts and speed. And I'm just trying to think about Milton and what the unintended consequences are for some of the solutions that we're discussing, namely, if we take Caitlin, is it called? And like, we do just the right-left, would that become the new Milton Street? So, do we know if, if that is being utilized to some extent in the same way currently today?
I'm looking through, so I have data on all of the places that our speed board has been, at least back into 2023. I guess I would answer, in some of the information that was provided to the council, multiple speed humps or speed tables or speed calming devices generally results in a diversion of 20% of the traffic on that street. That's according to the studies that were completed and cited in that Federal Highway Administration information that I provided a link to you for, or a link for, to you. I think certainly if you made it a left and right-only turn, absolutely it's going to push more traffic onto Lake Park Place and to other area streets. I don't think there's another option if they're looking to go either to the school or leaving the school and looking to get west, they're going to have to take another street to get there. So, it is going to increase traffic flow on those other neighborhood streets. I'm looking, I don't have a specific study for Lake Park Place. I do have a couple for Lake Street. I have a couple for Ferry Drive. And, and I guess just in response to several statements about people slow down generally when they see a speed board, hopefully, yes, it's one of the goals is that they do slow down. That's why we put it out there. But if you compare the data from Milton Street to the data from other streets, it is eye-popping as to how much larger of a percentage of vehicles are going over 25 miles per hour on other streets as compared to Milton Street. For example, if you wanted it, on Mulberry Street at Prairie Avenue, we had 7,900 cars in an eight-day period, and 67% of them were going over 25 miles per hour in a 25 mile per hour zone as compared to 2% on Milton Street. That doesn't mean that 2% isn't a problem. I'm just stating numbers and facts. You would expect the same effect to happen on any other street. If people are going to slow down when they see a speed board, that they would slow down on another street too. And the data consistently says that there's significantly more speeding on other streets than there is on Milton Street. But again, this is what the data tells me. That's not my personal observation.
West Lake Park Place will be a grant-funded project through the?
LRIP?
STP Urban, STP Urban program. So, your ability to add traffic calming will be at the mercy of the, the state's review team. That is, that is identified as a collector, not as a residential local. And so, there may be restrictions placed on the city during the design phase, but we won't know that until we have the STP Urban kickoff meeting with the DOT. Likely, we'll start the process later this year.
What, what street were you just referring to there?
What was that?
What street are you referring to?
West Lake Park Place.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was just thinking of the consequences of, yeah, it's just, are we just moving the, would be moving the volume, 700, and the issues from one street to a different street, whether it's West Lake Park Place or Phillips or whatever it might be. And I was just, I was just trying to understand if we know what the volumes are today, and are they really small, or are they kind of balanced? I don't, I just was wanting to learn about the streets that also would be possible new feeders if we entertain a change on Milton. I was just trying to understand the.
So, if it was a series of speed humps, you would anticipate a diversion of 140 cars daily to other roadways based on the data from the Federal Highway Administration? If you make Catlin Drive left or right turn in the afternoon, you would, you would expect that, you wouldn't be able to get to Milton Street legally. And so, you would expect the diversion in the afternoon to exceed that number than a diversion simply from speed humps placed on the road.
Yeah. But that would only affect the public high school traffic. It wouldn't impact the Lake, the.
Lake Side.
Thank you, Lakeside. Obviously, losing my.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right. Not to say that one is better than the other, just saying that that only impacts one.
One source of traffic.
Source of the problem. Can I comment on, because of the five of us, I work with high schoolers. So, I can speak to the fact that if we consider, and I did, I heavily thought about, well, why can't we put down removable speed bumps? And that's why some of that information is put into the memo, I think, is because I had asked Drake about that possibility, simply from the, the point of view that my, my in-laws have a road that they live on, and they put temporary speed bumps in there because it's close to a, close to a, a, a lake and a beach. So, safety-wise, it makes the most sense, and those are removable. But there's only one way in and one way out. In place of Milton, and I, this is going against every grain that I have, but the way that I can see it happening is very similar to what you were saying, that if we do it to one, then they're going to go to another. And that's the thing, is that when you place down a rule on teenagers, they find another way. And whether or not we continue to put speed bumps all over the city in order to prevent this from happening, it's not going to necessarily stop it. That doesn't mean it's okay. I think we need to be thinking a little bit more strategically, and I like that there were some options as far as, you know, changing, you said Catlin, I think it's Caitlin Drive, I don't know, to right and left only. However, I would ask you, Chief, how do you go about enforcing that in that moment? Because, you know, it's a sign, much like a stop sign, and we all know that people tend to fly through them sometimes. What's going to prevent a teenager from going straight across and not receiving, you know, any kind of consequence if the, we have, we just don't have the patrolling ability there? So, what I'm concerned about is, yes, we can put these things in place, and we can say this is going to happen, but the fact of the matter is, is there's going to be these instances. And how do we make sure that this is not going to be, I guess, a, a model to, that we have to then implement throughout the rest of the city?
I don't know that I have an answer for that. I think the council as a body has to answer that of, are you setting a precedent or creating a policy that now you're binding yourself to for future projects? I, I don't know. I can see certainly the argument from anyone living on the next street of having an argument to say that they should have some sort of speed calming device installed. And I, I guess I just want to say is, I don't discount the, the threat that occurs from the interaction between traffic and pedestrians. I think drivers are more distracted than they've ever been, and I think that's everywhere. I don't think it's specific to Milton Street. I don't think it's specific. I say that's on every street in our community. And if you looked at the data that I have from every other street where our speed board has been, I think you'd be a little alarmed at what percentage of vehicles are going over the speed limit. The flip side of that is, from an enforcement perspective, so to go back, the only thing that's going to prevent them from going straight, if it's a left or right turn only, is if we're there to enforce it.
Right.
Or if there's at least the fear that we're going to be there to enforce it. And that's true for speed limits. That's true for really any traffic laws, is enforcement is the way that you get people to voluntarily comply, right? Because they feel that they're going to be held accountable. Obviously, we have the resources that we have. So, enforcement every day at a specific location is not a possibility. I guess, you know, my thought on it is speeding is a problem. It's a problem everywhere. I use the data because, you know, quite frankly, I haven't had personal conversations with residents that have come to me with concerns. This is the first time that it's been brought up other than the one phone call that I had. So, if, if, you know, if our community is looking for engagement, and I always am, then I think that I'm here over 40 hours a week, many more, most weeks. You know, that's what I'm here for. And I think it, it's unfortunate that the first time that we're really having this discussion is right now in, in this forum, because I think the discussions could have and should have been had. Not to say that there weren't efforts to have discussions with anybody, but they weren't with me. And since I'm largely responsible for the public safety function in this city, I think that those are discussions that I should have been involved in or approached about. So, you know, if you say that I just don't listen, I haven't had anyone say anything to me to listen to. So, I can't listen. I can use the data that I have. I can use my own two eyes because I've sat out on Milton Street during school times, morning traffic or afternoon traffic. I can use the information that I receive from my officers, knowing that they're out there doing what they're supposed to do. And that's what I present to you with a recommendation to say, if you decide to do this, you certainly have the ability to do that. But I think you're opening up the door to have to do this on any street project where people report a speeding problem or a traffic safety problem, because I think those problems exist everywhere.
If, can I interrupt for just one? Can I go for a second? If you don't mind, Mary.
Go ahead.
Okay. I want to talk about policy aspect of it, that is something that has kind of been taken for granted in this circumstance, I think. City staff, the engineers that are involved in the annual maintenance projects, the annual capital improvement projects on roads, so we do approximately one per year, there are just established policies. And that is what design is in accordance with. Those policies can be veered from, but I think staff struggles with interruptions like that. We are, we are required, because it's council order, we are required to design in accordance with those policies. To veer from that can be done by the city council, but the staff doesn't really know until they're told by the city council to do so. So, you talk about precedents in this circumstance. I don't know that that, that one-off Milton Street, which is a block long, 950 feet or whatever, I don't know that that's presidential in nature, but what I do know is that in the last nine years that I've been here as your city attorney, I've seen this request numerous times. The first instance was on Ferry Drive when it was being used as an alternative route during the Highway 89 redevelopment project. Subsequently, on off-streets in the Mulberry Street redevelopment project, I didn't see the request on Oak Street. I don't recall the request on College Street, but we do experience, excuse me, experience this regularly. We have anticipated projects coming up, Prospect Street, which affronts a school, that I assume this question comes up again. And I just want to bring into light, in accordance with those policies, the competing interests that you face. There is only so much right-of-way. There are more cars than there've ever been in, in the city of Lake Mills. There's competing interests. There's more activity. The, the city council has made it a, a priority to address alternative forms of, of transportation throughout the city. So, you have that competing interest, and there's only so much room. Anecdotally, I appreciated the, the, the story, not the story, the bringing up of the issue on Mulberry Street from the early 90s. I lived it. I was there. I lived on the corner of 743 Mulberry Street. I remember that instance very well. I remember a different event on Tyrridina Park Road where a young lady was hit by a car, and then sidewalks were installed after that. I think a reaction to those is absolutely appropriate, but it should be measured. It should be deliberate, and it should be with a plan. So, if you continue to veer from established policy, you're going to put staff in a situation where they're land, they're hand-tied, they're hogtied, and they don't necessarily know what to do. The process that we put this through was in accordance with every other process that we've done. There was a review opportunity at the Public Works Board prior to bid letting. The Public Works Board made a recommendation that the design should go forward and be bid in that manner. There was a response to that when it was after the council had already bid the project out. You received a bid from the contractor, and they have a contract to build the road in accordance with that. You can make a change to this if you so, so desire, but it's going to take more time. It's going to create more costs, and I'm not trying to put cost over a moral responsibility or anything like that, but these are the considerations that you make. So, if you're going to go this direction and continue to veer from policy, then I would suggest that you, you look at it and you figure out what the appropriate response is in accordance with your plans, your planned designs in the future, and make decisions that are a little bit more proactive and give, in giving staff a, a direction with regard to it, reasonable standards where the installation of speed bumps is appropriate, as opposed to the studies and the, the warrant system that we're currently kind of bound by. I think that's, that's a difficult thing to do. We, we design and build in accordance with standards that are established. You can make exceptions, but only the council can. So, I think that's kind of how we've gotten to this point. The, the most disappointing thing for me is the attack on Drake. It just, there is no ill-intent there whatsoever. There is no malfeasance. There is nothing that I've observed that's trying to create a situation where concerns aren't heard or aren't respected. He's doing this in accordance with the task and the orders that he's received from the council that are far, far longer standing than any of you individual council members. It's a question for city. It's a question for the city policy, and you five are the ones that are tasked with making that decision. So, that's my point of view on this. You can. I don't know if you should. I grew up driving on Milton Street myself. I may have been pulled over there one time for speeding.
[laughing]
But I learned from that, and I think that's also something that we have to do. We gather evidence, and we make prudent decisions based on what's available. So, if you're going to make a decision, be deliberate in your decision and, and address it in a manner that's appropriate, not just for Milton Street, but for your planned future development as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mary, did you have a follow-up?
My question actually was going to be on policy. So, thank you, Dan, for giving that explanation. But can you help me understand where in our best practice process as a city council who has not been engaged in developing some of this policy that referring to?
Yep.
And would not know what the parameters are or the very important information such as, I mean, we'll use safety as an example, but there are other things that are a part of creating or changing policy that, like in this case, was not brought to our attention for a decision. So, we didn't discuss safety. We didn't have this information at hand. So, where, where is that policy and conversation when we are approaching a large investment decision? Because I, I don't, I feel like that needs to be, we need to figure out how to do that better, because I think we missed an opportunity.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not going to go that far that you missed an opportunity. This went through normal course of procedure, which includes Public Works Board review. That's statutory obligation. The Public Works Board considers the elements of the design prior to letting. Our, our engineers are bound by professional credentials. There, the policy that exists is apparent in the designs that have been accepted through time. You have not installed speed bumps on any of your road projects, to my knowledge. You have veered, there used to be a policy, there is a policy with sidewalks, for instance, that we fill gaps in, in accordance, or in, in the process of doing a road maintenance or road improvement project. You veered from that recently. So, the Public Works Board as a vessel, as a tool, is the appropriate area for the design criteria to be considered. You then have a, a subsequent crack at the design. When you have the bid, or the, the process of allowing the bid to go out come before you, you have all of the materials in front of you, and you can make design changes as a board at that point in time. Following that, it's bid out, you let the bid, and then you receive bids, and you can make changes in accordance with practice at that point in time if there has been community response to the documents that weren't at. um, response to the documents that weren't at, or that, that didn't occur at Public Works Board or at the city council. So you have control over it the whole time, but statutorily and in accordance with our ordinances, that's where the opportunity really starts, at the Public Works Board, and then through the city council. With regard to established policy, we comply with standards that are established in the Uniform Model Traffic Code. We comply with standards that are established, um, by the federal government for safety reasons. Um, we, we build and design in accordance and in consideration of such standards, and then we have the history of the city of Lake Mills and all of the projects that have been done through time as kind of precedent. So, back to the Milton Street example, a one-off where you install three speed bumps may not be precedential for the next one, but it will open the, the request again, and I know that because we've experienced a number of times just in the last number of years.
So there's, I mean, we have engineering specifications for constructions of roadways within the city of Lake Mills that designate certain criteria which must be met to be a public roadway within the city. Um, so the council could order a, a review of those engineering specifications. It, one criteria that came up during, um, College Street, uh, that was at conversation with the Public Works Board, um, not a very long one, if I recall, was that there is a, there is a certain standard width of, of roadway that's within those specifications that would have, that would have necessitated the expansion, uh, the widening of, of College Street. At that time, there was a conversation that the width of the roadway as it exists should be, should be maintained, that we should not be striving to widen roadways, um, within established neighborhoods with established streets. Um, so there are, there are, there's the, obviously the sidewalk policy that exists, there's a bicycle pedestrian plan that's been adopted. Um, so there are a number of, of local documents that have been adopted, and then you have the, the state and federal, um, criteria by which streets are, are designed as a, as a matter of, of course. Similarly to how we, um, we routinely receive requests for placement of stop signs, um, throughout the community, often times in, in a, in, um, conjunction with a complaint regarding speeding. The, um, Uniform Manual, I can't remember the exact name, it, it essentially states that a, a, a stop sign is never warranted as a speed control device. And so we, um, at a staff level routinely say no, that it's not the policy of the city to install stop, stop signs in conjunction with, um, speed-related matters, that stop signs are to control intersections, not to control speed. Um, so those are different places that those policies live, and then there is the, what has been done in the recent past as far as road reconstructions go. There is one option that's available to you as I was kind of discussing this with, um, the engineers, and that is because of, the road is going to get paved regardless, it's, it's contracted for, and then cuts will, would have to be made in order to install, um, traffic calming. Um, you can wait, you can choose to do another speed study, to have additional monitoring, to have additional enforcement, and see what happens on that street, if the data changes from the road reconstruction, if the speed study what, did not collect an accurate representation of it. And then we can bid another project for solely the installation of, of speed humps. Um, it would involve the same procedure that would go on if you establish a change order now and that you cut, you cut the, the pavement, um, it would just be happening at a later date. So this is going, that process won't change, you're still going to be cutting the sections in which you're going to install them. Um, and that's, that's based on the, the contract that exists, says it exists today, and conversations with the contractor on how they would install these if a change order was approved. Um, so there won't be, it, it's not as if the only option for you is to do it right now. You can choose to wait, because the road is going to, the effect on the road is going to be the effect on the road, whether you do it during this project or if you do it next summer.
Can I ask a, just a quick follow-up question to that? If we would, um, decide to, to seek a change order, we have one contractor who has won the bid, um, we may not get the optimal price from them, but if we did, if we waited and later decided to do a project, would that be subject to competitive bid and where we might, might, I mean, I know it's a kind of a crystal ball question, but where we might be able to get a better price?
I believe it would. Anything over twenty-five thousand dollars that's public construction is required to be competitively bid. So I would anticipate that yes, the project would require to be competitively bid, and we would certainly hope, um, for more bids than we received on the Milton Street project. It will be a smaller project, which may invite, um, more bidders. Um, it could also, assuming the council approves the Prospect Street project, it could also, that someone could choose to piggyback that's already mobilized. Um, so it's possible, uh, there's no guarantees as to what, um, how many bidders will receive.
Greg, I'm not usually looking your direction, so I wanted to make sure I'm not missing if you wanted to say anything.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, great. Michelle?
Um, you mentioned fifty thousand roughly. Remind me what the budget is for the Milton Street, um, repair, uh, redo?
The total budget?
The total road, the road portion or the total project?
The total project.
One point two, one point two million dollars? Um, yeah, one point two million. That's the, the fifty thousand is the, is the expected upper band absent design costs.
Right, because we have to also...
Like, we can't tell you what it's going to cost until we design it and formally request a change order from the contractor. That all costs dollars once we start down that road. The initial, our analysis currently is the best upper band price we can give to you without incurring additional costs that hasn't been authorized by the council.
Okay. And you had mentioned another study, I don't know, um, when that would be, because school's out, so...
Well, we would, we would...
You're, you're missing some traffic time there.
We wouldn't set it up, the road's going to be under construction this summer, so it wouldn't set it up this summer, it would be set up during the school year. Um, so we would, we would capture school traffic, we wouldn't set it up during the road reconstruction project.
Okay. Um, I have a question for Chief, and this might be a dumb idea, I don't know, but we have, uh, traffic barriers, things that can be put up and to prevent traffic from going in or out of a, of a street. Is that with, is that outside of our abilities of doing for the safety of Milton Street?
Are you saying permanently or during specific times of day?
During specific times of the year and of the day.
I mean, the city has the ability to restrict traffic on its city streets as it wishes to do, so yes, we have the ability, whether it's feasible to have, um, the staffing and, and whether you want to commit that type of, um, manpower daily to either put things out and take them down, if you're talking daily, I, I, I guess that's a decision the council would make. I would say it would be a significant burden on our staff if the police department or if the Streets Department was responsible for doing it.
Understandable. I just didn't know if that was an option.
Um, I want to make some comments and then I might, might have a question in here, um, along the way, but I, I want to thank all the people from Milton Street for being here and for sharing your concerns and the research that you've done, um, two weeks ago, and then again tonight, and I really appreciate you raising these concerns, and I think it's helping the council to learn, uh, some of us, maybe we're more familiar than others, but to sort of, um, make sure that we understand the process that our staff goes through when we design a project like this, and how safety is evaluated and how, you know, these things are evaluated. So I think it's been, it's very educational to me, and I think it's very helpful for us to have gone through this effort. Um, some of the things that I have heard, um, you and your neighbors talk, all of you neighbors on Milton Street talk about, um, were very compelling to me, that you're concerned about the care and safety of, of your neighbors, that you have vulnerable, you know, children, elderly people in your neighborhood, um, that you'd like to avoid a fatal accident. I mean, I, I think those are all very compelling statements to me. Um, I think they're true of most every Lake Mills resident, that's how I feel in my neighborhood, I know others feel that way in their neighborhood as well. So I, I'm so grateful to be in a community where, um, you know, neighbors feel that way about each other and look, look out for each other, and I don't think there's anyone on this council, I, I don't want to speak for others, but that would want a fatal accident. I mean, that's, certainly it's our responsibility to keep our community safe within the means, you know, that we have to do that. So those, I appreciate all of those issues that you've raised. Um, I, I think it's very important that we have objective criteria that we use to make decisions of when we're going to, um, uh, design a street, or when we're contemplating adding safety measures, and, um, I think that's the only way that we can really be fair to everybody else on every other street that may, you know, from time to time see speeding traffic. I live, um, on the north end of the end of Ferry Drive, and we see lots of cars coming around the corner. So I mean, I think it's sort of well-known that there's the bypass around Main Street and the downtown that goes along Ferry Drive. Um, so it's, you know, is, I think you brought up, Michelle, you know, it's like, well, so if we look at doing something here, then what, aren't people going to want their particular situation to be addressed as well? Um, I'm also, it's, I'm disappointed that we're talking about it, as, as Chief Schroeder said, that we're talking about it here at this point in time of the project. Um, I have never heard from any city resident about issues on Milton Street, uh, before two weeks ago, and that...
I'll talk about that.
Okay, and that's, that's great, I, I hope that you do. Um, and I, obviously, we've heard some, um, remarks that there's, with some miscommunication or some expectation that people would be notified, um, but we don't really have, I mean, the council doesn't have like collaborative meetings with people on streets to design these things. Our staff, you know, are, are authorized to do the design work, work with city residents, so I'm not sure where the misunderstanding is, but it would have been great to be able to talk about this before, you know, the, the project was, the design was completed and approved and, and the bid was awarded. Um, I'm also really, um, really thinking a lot about, um, that there are no speed bumps in the city, or speed humps, or, or really any of these kinds of things on any city streets now, and as I'm looking at the data that we have, and even the information that the, uh, property owners have shared, I'm, I'm not seeing, um, a problem that suggests that we need to, to invest in speed humps. And I'm, I'm not sure what the other solutions are, how the other solutions are going to work, and they will have some consequences on traffic flow that couldn't affect other streets, so I, I, I'm not really sure what to do here, but I, I, I don't see the data to support, um, investing in speed humps, and that, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Greg, did you have something more that you wanted to talk about?
Sure. I, I also want to reflect Lisa's comments, uh, thank you for the people of Milton Street area to come and, uh, and talk about your community or your neighborhood and, uh, what you're seeing. I did have, uh, contact with a resident, I can't remember her name, she might even be here tonight, she is, thank you. I talked to her when I was new on council, uh, probably back in nineteen twenty-one, or, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one. Back in the nineteen hundreds. Um, so at that time, I, what I did was I sat on the street in the couple mornings and couple afternoons, and then I went to the, uh, city manager. At that time, city manager was Steve Wilkie, there was a different police chief at that time, and, uh, we, uh, we did a, a speed study, very similar to what you did. I think it was actually two weeks, and the results were very similar to what you had here. So the criteria from that, uh, speed study, we didn't move forward with any further action because it was far, it was well under the criteria to, to do anything with the street at that point. Um, so we did look at it back in nineteen twenty-one, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one. I'm on the nineteen hundreds still. Um, Mulberry, this accident on Mulberry, very similar to what Mr. Drescher talked about. Um, on Public Works, we've had, we've talked about Mulberry Street, it, uh, it did impact our sidewalk policy, so I take it that that accident happened off of a, maybe the person was on the street and, and had a huge impact on our sidewalk policy through the years, and that accident is still talked about within, uh, within some of our meetings at Public Works. Um, I guess, when you look at the speed bump situation, I, I have a, a very similar reaction about where do we draw the line? Um, I lived for several years in, in, uh, Montreal where they do have speed bumps, and I've seen situations where they raced from speed bump to speed bump, and the noise is very loud, and when they hit those speed bumps, it makes a loud thump sometimes. Um, so I am concerned about that. I am open to other solutions, uh, but I don't think a speed bump is a, is a good solution in this situation, but it's something that we should review as far as other options possibly.
Mary?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking perhaps a little bit differently, and only it's because I, I, I did a little tool around and looked at all of the school zone areas, and I found it to be interesting that the school zone areas, it's fifteen miles per hour when school's in session, and there's nothing that slows the traffic down before you get to school zone. There are unique roads, I think Milton's a unique road. I, 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 I can resonate with these residents, because I live on Ferry, and it is very fast, and it's very well-trafficked in the morning, and they are young drivers, and not all of them are great. Some of them are very good, and they slow them down, and then they're all stacked up telling them to go. It is, it is a different driving set of patterns, and I, I haven't done a police report. I, I, I just think it's common knowledge, and when eighty-nine gets backed up, as we're growing, since I've, I've moved into Lake Mills nine years ago, the traffic has gotten heavier, a lot heavier. So as we get bigger, eighty, that Ferry and that cut through, if we cut through Ferry down to, um, we end up cutting Ferry all the way down to, um...
Sandy Beach Road.
Sandy Beach Road? Here we go. I mean, we've got, we have traffic, we have to be smart about our traffic, and I, I am, would like to think, I'm thinking more strategically about, and I brought this up at the last meeting, where, including Milton, and, and then understand the consequences, Milton Street, our school streets, other key feeders where we have youth, so those that are trying to get to Lakeside and the high school that are driving, like where do we have areas where we should be thinking, and this is policy, what, what should our policy be? I couldn't find a policy anywhere online relating to school zone, um, that Lake Mills desires, but should we be thinking, and I don't know if a steep, speed humps is the right thing, I read a lot about speed cushions, speed humps, speed bumps, I'm, I was reading about the pros and cons of all these different tools, and I think a conversation about how we handle our schools, our safety in key areas where we have young people driving and walking, that, that we know we have volume, would be worth a conversation. And I'd be open to considering something, and I don't know how other techniques, um, work, things like, what if you put the speed, we went to fifteen miles per hour, and you put the speed limit on the road? Like you painted on the road? I don't know, does that help? Is that just a, and then the next day you go, it doesn't make any difference, you're still speeding? Or I've seen the big yellow, what do they call them, safety drums that say "slow" on them, made in a little like bump-out panel. Could we pilot something to see, does that slow? It, it's ugly, because you have big orange cones, and then you can't park on the street anymore on that side where the big hump of the cone things are, but is there something to kind of make it less straight-through, especially I'm thinking after it's lovely paved? So I, I'm, I'm open to thinking of creative solutions that will help us to then understand, does it make, does it make a difference? Do the residents see a difference? Do we have, do we have new data that shows we went from two percent to four, I mean, at worst, four percent, we just were till at two percent, didn't change a thing? I mean, I just think it'd be interesting to think more strategically about other things, speed indicator devices, license plate reader cameras, like they all cost money, and I don't know what would be the best solution, but to continue the conversation and have a meaningful, meaningful discussion on safety in critical junctures, and I think Milton is one of those, given the pattern, but then what is the consequence on the other streets? So if you were to put something temporary, even short-term on Milton, does it force, as people start then going down west? Like Park Place, we haven't solved a thing, we've just moved the problem from one spot to the other, but I don't know the answer, and I don't think permanent now... answer. And I don't think permanent now is right. That's where I'm going. I feel like more investigating of other solutions that are giving us a chance to test them before going full speed hump, permanent solution is kind of what I'm thinking. So, I would say no on the change order for the road, but yes for thinking about what alternatives that are cost-effective, because I know I've heard a lot of great support for cost-effective, but might give us a chance to try something that helps.
Yeah, it sounds like some kind of process, whether you refer it to the Public Works Board, to begin, to begin that process and incorporate some kind of public input, to look at what the existing, the collection of existing road engineering specifications, road reconstruction policies, what has staff been instructed to do to date when designing a new road, a road reconstruction, or the installation of a new road? And are there criteria by which we want to automatically trigger a review or the installation of certain design features? That, that we could do, we would, we would need some probably small resources in order to engage engineers and traffic engineers and civil engineers on that conversation. But that is certainly something that staff is interested in, because the goal is to know beforehand what the council wants on any given street. And we've had several instances in the past where we have, where it has been designed with what it has, we have been instructed to do, and something has changed along the way, and we've deviated from policy, or done something that is a deviation from the instructions that have been provided. I think the sidewalk policy is 2006. The bicycle pedestrian policy is similar. The engineering specifications are probably around the same age. There's some ordinances on what newly-platted residential neighborhoods that could be looked at as well. And that would be the opportunity for the council to determine, are there special considerations it wants to give to roadways that are along, and does, if it's, if there's school routes, if it's within a certain distance of a school, if the, if roadways should be narrowed, or if they should be widened, should bicycle facilities be given priority over street parking, should street parking be given priority over bicycle facilities? Should the longstanding sidewalk policy be reaffirmed, or is, has the desire of the council changed? You know, these are all questions that can be answered, but they can only be answered by the policymakers. It is not, it is not an administrative decision that we can, that we can make for you. We can't, we can't break from these standards that have been set, but you have, you can always set new ones. And so, if we know ahead of time, then you will get, when the road comes to you, it will be what you expect it and what you want it to be.
Michelle?
Okay, so, I want to summarize so I understand correctly. Number one, I want to agree, or I do agree with Mary's point of view about looking and exploring other options besides a speed bump or a speed hump. Just because I understand the necessity of it, I'm a parent, I know, okay? I get it. It's scary, and I work with high schoolers, so I know how impulsive they are. I have one now, actually, it's kind of scary in itself. But getting to that, I'm hearing you say, Drake, that in order for us to prevent this kind of conversation from happening in the future, that we need to consider having, taking a look at the road construction or reconstruction policy and procedures, and making sure, like you said, that there would be special considerations for certain roadways to make sure that things are put in place that are going to make, that are going to ensure that this kind of thing, conversation, being reactionary to the road reconstruction isn't going to happen again. Did that make sense?
It does, yeah. I would, I would just say that there's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say prevent or ensure, you know, prevention-
Sure.
Because-
Well, there's no real way, that's, like she said-
But no matter what policy you set, no matter what standard you establish, there will be disagreement. And so, there was, there is always the opportunity for any member of the public to come to you at any, at any time and request a review or something, a change or something, an exception to something. And we saw that with our sidewalk policy, right? There were, there was an established criteria, it was designed that way, it was bid, it was awarded, and then it was, the decision was made to remove that sidewalk, the change order was issued to remove a sidewalk from, from that project. And so, that avenue will always exist. The city council can deviate from what it has set. You govern yourselves.
Well, and we don't always know what previous councils have decided. And so, it is kind of, kind of a, I don't know, fail-safe, if you say, well, we didn't know, so therefore, you know, that, that, that we're just going to do with what we were told to do, but now if you've changed your mind, well, we didn't change our mind, we've changed. And so, with that lack of education or lack of understanding of those particular things, I think it's not fair to assume that we want to deviate from that. We, we simply are listening to the constituents, right? And so, what I'm also hearing is that, and this is an old, old way of looking at it, but the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So, unfortunately, what I'm, what I'm hearing, and this is just the way that it seems like this is the best moving forward, is that if there's a problem, reach out. If there's something that you think, well, they don't need to be bothered by it, reach out. If there's something that, you know, I don't want to call the police over something where it's just this kid driving down, reach out. Because documentation provides the data. There isn't going to be snapshots. There's got to be data. And in a situation where I work with kids in public, in public schools, and we have behaviors, we don't want to write kids up every single time, but we have to, because if we don't, we don't have the data. So, my, 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 my point is, is that we will go ahead and have to make the decision that we have to make right now, which may not be the one that you want us to make, but data, it's the only way to go forward.
To answer the second part of your question, yes, you can direct the review of any and all documents, policies, procedures, practices, established for the standards and specifications related to road reconstructions, road maintenance, pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, any and all.
Well, and it sounds to me like maybe that does need to be looked at, but, you know.
Does it include like speed limits, and that includes, like, what is it? Because I think this is, this is complex.
There's statutory- There are, yeah. -considerations for speed limits. And so, every, any, anytime you're looking at, there's a certain amount of local control over speed limits, but there's also statutory restrictions on what you can, what, how much change you can implement, and when and where you can implement those. And so, I can't give you a blanket answer on, could, what should speed limit policy be. There are certain things you can do, but it's location-dependent and confined by state statute.
Because I did notice, that was the only thing, because I was, I was trying to do what you were talking about, Dan, I was trying to understand policy, to understand how we got to where we're at today. And I uncovered there were two fifteen mile-per-hour speed limit zones specifically noted, as, I don't know if they were exceptions or what they were, but one was, they called it Lakeside Park, which is Bartles Beach, didn't even know it was called Lakeside Park. Tells you where I was dating, my, I wasn't here then at the time. And then there was a second one. So, I just thought that was interesting regarding, you know, trying to understand that they were highlighted and noted directly with, with being, I would say, a deviation probably from the norm, for some reason, so.
So, Mary, I, I really appreciate your thinking on this and how you've pulled kind of some ideas together. And I think one of your points has really stuck out to me, that we are growing, you know, slowly, but we are continuing to grow, and our number of north-south streets is finite. Maybe we'll get CP Avenue through one of these days, but I don't think that's going to solve this problem either, or these, these issues. So, I, I'm going to take a stab at a motion and see if this feels like something that the council, like a direction that we're headed. So, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the Public Works Board to evaluate existing policies with respect to street standards and specifications, and make recommendations for additional criteria to address traffic safety.
I'll second that. I don't know if that's got everything in it that we want, but at least, is that a, is that a start?
So, yeah.
So, we're on discussion?
Oh, yeah. So, we have a motion and a second. Okay. So, yeah, discussion, yes.
Okay. Drake, there are, the memo that, when it refers to the warrant system, there are criteria in place. It's if, you know, if it meets a certain threshold, is, you know, that's, that's when you would consider this. And I'm assuming there's, that applies to things other than speed bumps, too. Is that correct?
Intersection control, yes. There's a, there's a number of warrants for any number of design features on a roadway.
Yeah. Specifically to this motion, it is very broad, and I don't know if it's going to accomplish what, anything useful, because there are criteria, we're being asked to make an exception, and maybe we should, and maybe we shouldn't, but to just throw a blanket, we should just, you know, tell Public Works Board to review everything related to streets is a lot.
Well, so, I agree with that, and I thought I would spit something out and then see if we could refine it. I, I would not propose, or at least in my motion, I'm not proposing to look at sidewalks or bicycles. I'm proposing to look at traffic, street design and traffic safety. So, I don't know, hopefully Dan got a good writing down my motion or misty, but I don't know if that was clearly captured, so maybe that could be elaborated a little bit.
Do you need an amendment, Dan?
Well, I don't know. I think you specified engineering and-
Street standards and specifications.
Right. For street design, for redevelopment of street design and traffic safety. Street design does incorporate pedestrian safety, it does consider that. I, I don't know how you separate the two when you're considering the design of a roadway. I think that would be difficult to do so. I think, I think if what you're saying is that the sidewalk policy is not what you're wanting them to review, but incorporating the street design to complement the existing sidewalk policy is how we would probably interpret that, is that the council has not asked for the sidewalk policy to be amended. And so, any changes in street design should complement that existing, that, and the sidewalk policy is relatively straightforward. It's that we will fill gaps in the sidewalk network when we reconstruct a street, or when funding becomes available. That is really what that boils down to, until there, on newly constructed streets, sidewalks go in as a matter of ordinance, and absent a action by the council when we reconstruct a street, sidewalk is installed on both sides, unless there's a topographical feature that makes it impractical to do so. So, we can, we can work within that, within that structure. And I, I just, I, there's no, we're not taking this motion as that you want a carte blanche new sidewalk policy as part of it, but you want to amend the street design while also maintaining the policy already set within the sidewalk policy. So, if, as long as you don't, if you don't mention the sidewalk policy, we won't consider changes to it.
Great.
We did talk about this a bit when we did the UTV policy, and we basically said, we'll give it a couple years, see how things happen, and decide if we need to look at it as a whole, because you're looking at electric scooters now, you're, you're looking at, there's more and more bicycles on the road, the pedestrian traffic in different areas. We were, we've been pretty critical tonight of the teenagers. I live on, I live on Main Street, and I can tell you firsthand that the parents are worse than the students.
[laughing]
Most definitely the parents are worse. Speed calming, I guess, to be, to kind of get to, maybe this isn't what Greg was thinking, but, but on the speed calming issues, we seem to be pointing kind of to the school district areas. That narrow this down a little bit, maybe that's something we can do first off, and then go back and look in an expanded view. That's, that's just my thought, we could maybe get to, get to some issues a little bit quicker if we do speed calming in the school district areas. Not limited to teenagers.
Or high-volume school feeder. I mean, like in the school, that's where I was thinking in my, trying to, trying to think, there is some, there are some unique, I know every resident wants to have nice, slow people on their streets. We all do. We want, it isn't our mission, I appreciate, whoever looked at our mission, I appreciate that, that was in my notes. It isn't our mission, safety is in our mission statement, so that means it's important to us. That everyone has an interest in safety, but there are some unique student-centric, whether they're behind the wheel, or driving, walking, biking, getting dropped off. I think that I, would be a narrower angle to look at in the same language that you're talking about, Lisa, you know, looking at evaluating the policies, standard streets in the, in the smaller subset of those. I was even thinking about that Caitlin, could you do, like, how does that fit in? Because it's, it's a school-specific route, you know, you see those little orange cones that go out that make you go right or left, or you can do, you could do something that kind of gets, you know, but that, that wouldn't be a, is that a policy? Is that a special, unique circumstance that you would do something like that in this case to address this particular issue? And would you get some of the answers out of the policy review? I don't know.
I feel like it's also important to include, let's say, a radius from those locations, because I, I know for a fact that there's quite a few people that, people, not just teenagers, people who fly down what I think is Grove Street. And when you get to the bottom of Grove Street and Jefferson Street, there's like a, an indentation that really slows everybody down. And I remember saying something to Dwayne about this, and I was like, hey, you know, is there something we can do about it? And he goes, well, there is, but think about how we're preventing traffic from going phew off of that area. And I was like, you know what, that's a good point. So, it's got, if we're going to think about school areas, we need to look at if there's a radius we want to consider. And when we think about that, some of those radii are going to intersect, and all of a sudden, it's the whole city of Lake Mills. So, I think we have to be careful on exactly what, what does school district area look like, and what, what, what locations are we more specifically concerned about, where there's a lot of foot traffic, or where there's a lot of wheel traffic. That's, you know, we, that's part of it. So, I'm thinking about that as well.
Well, and I think, you know, school district doesn't really have a definition, or it's, you know, it's maybe not the right term, but maybe in the vicinity of schools or something, something that's broad. Because if, if a radius is part of the solution, then that's what I would want to hear back from the Public Works Board, rather than telling them what the radius should be, you know, like-
Okay.
How would they, how would they come up with that, or derive that, or recommend that? So, how could we, I mean, I'm certainly open to improving my original motion to be more specific, to kind of focus in on looking at design criteria for addressing traffic safety in the vicinity- at design criteria for addressing traffic safety in the vicinity of schools.
You can just simply add with an emphasis on traffic safety within the vicinity of schools to it. I don't, do you, it, it depends if you want to limit the Public Works Board to only considering traffic safety enhancements or criteria or engineering and road specifications to the vicinity of schools. You can ask them to prioritize that first, but eventually we would want, we are going to want some kind of instruction to know how we want to design these things because only a certain, we're only going to be doing road reconstructions in the vicinity of schools every, so often. And so then you're going to run into a point where maybe your vision for what you want roads to look like...
Just looking at the agenda.
That's fair. Are going to look like as holistically. I've been reminded to remind the council that we should not stray too far from the listed agenda topic, which is specific.
Milton Street.
It's specific to traffic calming on Milton Street. So I don't think that the motion is, is out of order as a reaction to the discussion on Milton Street, but we should be cognizant that a broader conversation on traffic safety at length may not be within the spirit of the listed agenda item. But a referral to the Public Works Board is certainly in order.
On that, I think that could also, we could do that without having a formal motion decreeing it needs to be studied too, couldn't we? That's not something that I could take back as the, you know, as a member of the board or Lisa or, you know, any of the council members could come and could, you know, could come to a Public Works Board meeting and to, you know, have that discussion.
I do agree with you. However, I think there's another side to that coin and that's the Public Works Board, other subordinate boards do really appreciate clear direction from the council. And if it's made in a formal motion, that is a statement of the, the request of the council and that's clear, that's follow, you know, it's, you can follow through on it. So.
Yeah. I, I agree. I just don't think we're at the clear point of knowing exactly what we want yet.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Lisa? When you're putting together your, the kind of what you were thinking with your resolution, does it, or I should ask, is it included in the policy, like details such as what kinds of speed limit indicators are there? Like whether, because we have a few in this city that have the flashing, you know, like your speed limit is 25 in the 30 zone or is that all a part of the policy and is that what you were thinking would also be including? It's, it's some of those unique, because that's why I'm thinking are some maybe possible low-hanging fruit to that, I don't know if they're policy-related, but there could be something that would work on Milton to give us something to start combating kind of the observation and the speed volume. And I don't know if that's included, would that be included? Would they know? Maybe it's getting to the specificity of Public Works Board know to, or is it include something like that?
That wasn't in my mind of including those kinds of features. I guess I was thinking more to, Drake brought up, you know, that we have standard, standards and specifications that our staff, that represent our policy for how street design should work and what our expectations are. And so it's that policy that I'm, that I'm recommending or making a motion to have the Public Works Board look at that with respect to traffic safety and whether they would recommend any additional criteria for traffic safety. So, you know, there's a flashing speed light on Main Street as you, you know, come south off the interstate into town, but that is not related to the stand, the specifications for streets, I don't think.
So then where does that fall? Like, I'm just trying to understand. So I'm trying by alternatives. Where's that fall? Is this not in the policy?
Well, there are...
How would you get to the point where we say, you know what, we're going to put?
It's another, it's another warrant system under the Model Uniform Traffic Code. There are specific requirements for the installation of rapid reflective beacons. We have incorporated those into the rebuild of Highway 89. It was incorporated and it's being installed on Tyranina Park Road. They do show up in certain places. Typically, there's speed limit requirements, there's volume requirements, and then there's a mid-block crosswalk or a crosswalk that is in a sensitive area where you, you have to identify that there's a crosswalk there and pedestrians have the right of way. So there are standards that are established when, within the code, the, the uniform handbook that we follow.
Where do you find that?
You can search it right now. Model Uniform Traffic Code.
Traffic Code, okay. Thanks.
M U C T D, something, yeah.
M U, M U T C D.
M U T C, there you go.
So, and I'm thinking, if I'm understanding what you're getting at, you're, you're trying to maybe think of some short-term solution or whatever that we could offer to Milton Street. So we've got a motion on the table that's not that, but I think we could have more than one action.
Yeah. And I think Public Works Board can review signage criteria as well or what they want to prioritize.
Can I make a comment, public safety related? I guess I'm just thinking specifically public safety because I think that's really what's on the mind of the council, right? When we're evaluating projects and when we want to maybe take extra steps is, do we want to give special consideration to public safety? Is maybe, rather than pigeonholing around schools or in certain areas of a general, in areas where there's increased interaction between traffic pedestrians and bicyclists, maybe special attention is given to evaluating more data to see if speed calming or other traffic controls are warranted. Just kind of more of a general and it could apply to anywhere where you run into it. Because really where you're considering traffic calming devices or special crossings or things like that is where there's that interaction between pedestrians and traffic. Just my two cents on it.
I think that was very well stated. Can we, can we possibly, I'm almost hedging on can the staff make a recommendation for a motion for our next meeting or along those lines?
So there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor that includes street design.
Yeah. I'd like to make a decision tonight because I think people have taken time, you know, last meeting and this meeting, we want to, you know, have some, some motion, some resolution.
Street design is broad. So you, you're essentially, the motion is essentially telling the Public Works Board. Look, we have heard, we have heard some feedback on road reconstruction over, over a number of years. Different, different concerns that have been raised or suggestions that have been raised. And, and so you're essentially giving a broad directive to the Public Works Board that's, that's saying, we know that a number of policies and practices and adherence to certain warrants or commitments to certain, certain criteria have been made over the last 20 years, let's say it. And that the city council is saying, Public Works Board, take, take a look at these. Take a look at street design. How can we make it better? What should our priorities be? What is your vision that you would recommend to the city council for how we design these roads going forward and what, what instruction we provide so that when that first design, that 90% design comes to the Public Works Board, that they're reviewing it for consistency with city council adopted policies and city council adopted criteria, vision, whatever, whatever that may be, and, and reviewing those. And that it is that we are looking at how, what should we be looking at when we're looking at making roads safer? It's, it is broad, but road design is a, it covers a lot of different topics is when you're considering public safety. And so I think the motion as written allows it to be broad. I think it allows some amount of discretion by the Public Works Board to go to investigate certain areas that they may deem to be important or based on feedback that they, they may choose to solicit. It can lead them down different paths. It will likely be a long process, but the motion allows for exploration of a multitude of issues and a multitude of recommendations. And the only thing that you could request is regular check-ins, regular reports from your city council representative to say, here's the direction we're currently going. Here's what we're currently investigating. Here's what we're currently focusing on. And if that is in conflict with what the city council wants to be focusing on that moment, you can provide additional direction at that time. But I, I believe the motion as it's stated allows for a robust investigation into how the city wants its roads to be designed and what, what criteria by which it will evaluate the installation of certain features and how it will incorporate the priorities of this council into those projects.
I, I appreciate you saying that. I'm still, you know, mindful of Greg's comments that it is broad. And so I wonder if it would benefit from some, you know, amendment along the lines of, with specific attention to traffic safety, traffic safety measures.
Can I offer, can I offer an amendment or do we have to go through?
No, you can.
Can we add, with a focus on evaluating high pedestrian, bicycle and auto traffic areas, including Milton Street, to assess best approaches for speed, traffic controls and calming? I just wrote down a little bit of what Steve had said. Would that give the initial narrower direction?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I guess I was just wondering why Milton Street needs to be named. Because this would be the overarching policies for the city, right?
Correct. I was just ensuring that the, Milton, see Milton Street, based on the data, has high traffic with low incident higher, but I don't know what the standard of high traffic because we didn't have reports on all the other city, streets. So how, how is the Public Works Board going to choose which streets to pick?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That have high traffic or high ped or high, because we don't have, it's back to data. Because I know we love data, but we don't have it. We don't have the bandwidth to know what the traffic patterns are on, like all of our streets. So I was including Milton Street because that is a, an emphasis of our discussion tonight and we have citizens who have both anecdotal and actual data. And we do have some data. I mean, we know we have some higher, I think high volume, but maybe not necessarily the super high percent of, of speeding as maybe what you might observe as, as cars are going by. So I was just calling out Milton Street so that we were able to get back to closing the loop on if we have a solution that is short-term or long-term or not. So I was, I don't want to lose it, is all.
Okay. And I apologize in asking that. I did not call for a second. So you've proposed an amendment to my original motion. Is there a second on Mary's amendment?
Can you read it one more time?
Sure. To Lisa Lent-Andler, to address the criteria for traffic safety to evaluate high pedestrian, bicycle and automobile traffic areas, including Milton Street, to assess best approaches for speed, traffic controls and calming.
If you remove Milton Street, I would second it.
I would move Milton Street. Oh, I don't know. Can I say that? Because it's, okay.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend by Ms. Mager, seconded by Mr. Waters. So Dan, do you think you have the motion and the amendment?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
I just wonder if we could hear the motion and the amendment together so that we all have it. And I was hoping Dan or Ms. Steve would have it.
Do we need to go into five-minute recess? Okay.
No, he, he wrote fast.
So in that amendment, I didn't hear you replacing any language, so I'm going to just add it. And what I have is a motion to direct the Public Works Board to evaluate existing policy with respect to street standards and specifications to consider in road reconstruction, street design and traffic safety on high pedestrian, high-traffic streets. And then I wanted to add something about in proximity to schools, but I didn't. High-traffic streets, and then you removed Milton, but I didn't catch the end of that. What was that standard?
To assess best approaches for speed, traffic, controls and calming.
To assess best approaches to speed, traffic and calming.
Speed, traffic, controls and calming.
Okay.
Do we need to define the word high?
I don't know. They, it would be helpful, but I don't know that you can right now. I don't, I don't know that you have that information to do so. I guess my only, my only question to clarify is if, at the point of the addition, if it's with an emphasis on traffic, safety, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to ensure that the general direction is still provided, but there's a specific emphasis on what Mary is at, is amending with the addition.
And I thought I heard you initially say that with a focus on or with an emphasis on or something.
I may have, but that was, you know.
I would second that. Okay.
Yes.
So we're on discussion of the amendment right now?
Yes, discussion of the amendment. So Greg, who's does that? Do you feel like that gives a little bit more detail to it to give some clarity for the Public Works Board?
Well, yes, but is it about street construction or is it about traffic control?
No.
Can it be one and the same considering we're discussing the speed bump, speed hump as part of the, the street construction because of public safety? It seems to me to be very chicken and egg. That was a question, Greg. I wasn't sure what the answer was.
They, they interact, I guess, not to jump in and answer for you. The, the two interact. I think Greg is correct in that, that street construction can consist of certain technical specifications involved in materials and depths and base course and practices of how you reconstruct a street, whereas traffic control are additions to a road design, you know, features of a road design. But there's the construction aspect of it and the traffic control aspect of it. I think we can look at both. So I think the, the first part of the motion is, is holistic, looking at it all. And then the emphasis is on safety and traffic control being incorporated into those design features as part of the construction. So the Public Works Board will have to kind of prioritize what it's going to focus on first. But they, it's a long answer to a short question, but they interact. Traffic control and road design features, they interact. So it's all part of what goes into a road reconstruction.
I think it's a good question in a number of regards. And one would be if, if this is the action that we take tonight, the Milton Street project will go ahead as designed, but it would not preclude us from going back and adding a feature at some point in time after, you know, some of this review and is, so there would still be that opportunity to add something to existing streets that are not part of a reconstruction project.
Correct. The addition of speed humps involves cuts into the pavement at certain intervals and certain places and perhaps readjusting approaches a little bit. But as I stated earlier, that's exactly what's going to have to happen on Milton Street if you were to add them right, right now, direct us to add them right now. And so that is, there's no, there's no difference in the, the way that it will be constructed if you add them later. If, if we put, if that road gets redesigned and it's fresh pavement and a speeding, and we put, we study it again, right? We study speeds again and the warrants change. Nothing precludes you from designing and bidding the installation of those features. Nothing precludes you from designing and installing those features if the warrants aren't met in the future. You know, we, we talk about policies and procedures, but as I've said before, the council governs itself. The council can violate... itself. The council can violate its policies. The council can deviate from its practices. It is just the matter to which the efficiency piece of it is the wayne, efficiency versus responding to something that's occurring. So that's what I want to say is the people on the council will change. They have changed. Deviation is permitted. There's no one that's going to tell you in most circumstances, not all, but in most circumstances, that you can't violate a policy that you created. And I'm using the global you. I'm not saying the five of you specifically, but the city council as an entity. There are state statutes that you must comply with. There are federal regulations that at times you must comply with. There may be conditions of a grant that you have to comply with. But a local policy, a local decision can be overridden by another local decision.
Okay, so do people feel like they understand the amendment to the original motion because we're at the point of voting on the amendment, so Mary's amendment to the original motion? Is there any more discussion or do people feel like they understand it well enough? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Koots?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quittill?
Aye.
Motion passes four-one. Okay, so now we have the original motion as amended. I would like to propose an amendment to that in addition to it that would say... Well, I'm not sure of the transition here, but... And to authorize the city manager to engage a traffic engineer as needed to support this evaluation using unreserved fund balance not to exceed $20,000. And Drake, I'm wondering, I have no idea if that's a good amount or not, but...
I think that's fine. I think that mirrors what your council contingency is. I'm not sure if we've spent any out of it now, but we would probably start with council contingency before needing to use unreserved fund balance. So I would...
No, we used some last year. I can't remember if we've used any this year.
It's refilled. There's $20,000 put in and out of unreserved fund balance.
Okay, so I'll amend that to say I'm using council contingency and unreserved fund balance not to exceed $20,000.
And in practice, once I... Once we were... In practice, once we exhausted council fund balance, I would inform the council that it's gone and then let you know that unreserved fund balance is the next piece of it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question regarding the amendment? Is that... Can you repeat it again, please, for me?
So my motion, my amendment is to authorize the city manager to engage a, or we could say, contract with a traffic engineer to support this effort using council contingency funds not to exceed $20,000.
So the traffic engineer's job is to help Public Works determine?
It would be to help them evaluate different traffic calming measures, impacts on adjacent streets if you were to install a different measure. That's not... We don't have that in-house expertise, is my understanding, so.
Right.
I want to make sure the Public Works Board has some support.
I'll second this so we can discuss it.
Sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? So second amendment made by Ms. Curler, seconded by Mr. Waters. So any other discussion on that?
Yeah, and I do appreciate the, you know, acknowledging that funds maybe needed to be allocated to carry out, you know, this wish. But I am curious. We're going to ask an engineer to give us an opinion on an industry standard when the thing that started this is going against the industry standard. It seems... I don't know. Again, I'm not sure exactly what the goal of the motion is, and I think we need more time to figure this out. It's not that there's no, currently no standards and streets are just made willy-nilly. It's that we received a request to deviate from the industry standard because we need to think of the kids. And we can do that, but I don't know. I'm not sure why we need to be putting... I'm not sure why we need to be putting funds out there of doing that. I'm also very puzzled that this came from you, Lisa, simply because we had a whole ad hoc committee for the tree prevention or tree preservation. And when it came time to a vote, that was one where... That was my first meeting here and the price tag was too much. And you voted against spending money on something that we had spent a year studying and coming up with recommendations and wanted to try and implement as a pilot program, which I think that, you know, I voted yes for that just because there's a lot of work that had gone into getting it to that point. And there had been a lot, there had been broad, public, you know, support for, you know, trees going back to the, you know, main highway reconstruction project. That brought out a lot of feelings from a lot of people. So I don't... I understand that we all want traffic safety, but again, we're looking at how do we want to deviate from the norm or how do we want to deviate from industry standards? And I don't... I think we need to put more time and thought into this effort before we go forward with this. I'm not just the amendment. I'm... It's not that I don't think that we need to do something along these lines, but I don't think this motion is the right thing. I don't think we need to do it now. I don't think we need to just do something reactionary for the sake of doing something reactionary. And I don't think we need to start spending funds to do that if all we want to do is look at the industry standard handbook first. I would... I'm going to be voting against both the amendment and the motion, again, not because I don't think we should be doing something, but because I don't think this is clear. I don't think this is clear what we're doing or why we're doing it.
Any other discussion?
So I have... That's an interesting perspective, Greg. You know, I appreciate your sharing because we've had a lot of conversation about policy and the specific situation and what is standard and how to address some of the issues. I have an interest in this overall subject. So you bring up a really good point. I'm thinking about, you know, the comment that I made where our traffic has increased a lot in a lot of different areas over the course of, as we've grown and as patterns of development have changed. And I think we're behind in looking at even our corners by Lewis Station. I think we're behind looking at our corner by the Corner Mercantile, the volumes there, the backup that we have that goes all the way from the high school to the corner and all the way through there in past periods. It's slow enough that, I don't know, that's, I don't know, safety is or is not an issue. Bikes go zooming by. So I'm really interested in this subject. It is, it is, this is getting back to the comment, it has been facilitated or started by the specific circumstances on Milton. And so I think, and I don't know that I, and because I'm, you know, kind of worked in industry, that's, can't always fit a square peg in a round hole. Not every particular situation, I don't think, can be fit by a set of boxed standards. I think there, I think we have to have that, but we can always be better. Like you can add more. You can't take away, but you can always do more. And I don't know what that is. And so I have an interest in this overall subject. I think a traffic engineer would be really interesting, but I think it is critical because you can navigate. And especially if you're in Public Works, I think it's important that you have to be really clear that if we send this to Public Works, that we have really clear direction so that you all don't struggle trying to utilize this engineer to come with conclusions regarding how we change current policy or add additional to current policy. So I appreciate your sharing, but I feel that this is something we need to look at, whether tonight we have the right, exact right motion articulated since we've been... I'm not sure exactly how it reads when we read it when we're done because we've had a lot of amendments, but I feel that this is an important subject for us to take on. And I think it's spearheaded by some citizens who think we have a need, and I agree that we can look at this broadly for the city.
So Greg, I also really appreciate your insights and your thoughts on this. And I guess I'm kind of rethinking how we approach this. And Greg Waters, you suggested a moment ago that we maybe have staff draft something, and now I'm starting to rethink that. Maybe that would be a good idea because it is kind of hard to write something on the fly and or, you know, and then talk about it. And we're not all, you know, we don't have any language in front of us.
Maybe someone needs to sponsor and talk with staff to draft it up.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering. I mean, Greg Koots, you're on the Public Works Board, and if you're not voting in favor of something that we want to send there, it's putting you in a difficult position to try to communicate the will of the council.
It's still, yeah, it is the will of the council. It's not...
Well, right, right.
Correct. And I would certainly represent the will of the council as best I could. I'm not going to...
Right, but I think I, just hearing all of the discussion, I'm thinking that, well, I'd like to withdraw my proposal to amend my amendment to the original motion. I'm going to withdraw that, so.
Original motion?
My amendment regarding the funding.
If you want to withdraw at all, I would ask for unanimous. I think you should ask for unanimous consent because it's been amended and seconded and...
Right. Okay, right now I am just withdrawing my amendment that would add a funding element to it. So I'm going to withdraw that. So we are back to the original motion that had amendments from Mary with respect to traffic safety, and that amendment was passed four to one. So now we have a main motion that was amended once that we can continue to discuss or vote on. I would like to recommend that... So you're saying we can do this by unanimous consent? Or it would have, you're recommending unanimous consent? You're helping us figure out the procedure.
I don't think we're going to get unanimous, because Greg was saying...
I guess if your goal is to remove the current motion as amended from the table, you can ask the council for unanimous consent to remove that motion from the table, and then it will be gone.
Okay, I will ask for the council's unanimous consent to remove the original motion as amended from the table. Does that need a roll call then?
You can call for all in favor or you can call a roll call.
Okay, all in favor of removing the motion from the table. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any nays? Okay, so that motion is gone. So would... I can try to craft something, or would anyone like to craft a motion to direct Greg Koots to work with city staff to develop a resolution for our next council meeting to reflect tonight's discussion and to give some direction to the Public Works Or do we even need a motion for that?
We don't need a motion for that. You can always make a motion. A member can always come to staff and ask for assistance in crafting an item to be placed on the agenda. I am out of the office next week, Wednesday, and returning the following Tuesday. I'll be at a professional development conference. There are a number of other tasks that the city council has assigned that I, that you're expecting from me, Sandy Beach, an update on the library. I still owe Mr. Waters an updated Chapter 594 ordinance that I have not incorporated to get to his review for sponsorship on trees. And the plant commission is also asking to review our zoning code. And so I can get this. I can certainly get something to you by the next council meeting. Just if you don't see an update from Sandy Beach or an update on the library or an update on those other things, just be aware that that's what we're juggling right now. That there's just a number of council initiatives that have been started.
So speaking just for myself, I think we always need to be careful not to supplant priorities with new topics that, you know, that come up that we want staff to address because then we're in exactly the situation that you just described where the Sandy Beach, which is one of our top priorities, is set aside while we're working on these other things. So I don't know that there's a time sensitivity to send this to the Public Works Board if it's kind of along the lines of what we've been talking about tonight. But I think if, Greg Koots, if you wanted to work with staff on, you know, developing a resolution that you would support or that you would like to sponsor that can, you know, kind of move this topic forward, you know, over the next several weeks or whatever, I think that would be reasonable. Does everybody feel comfortable with that not needing to be done in a two-week timeframe? Okay.
I guess I'm hedging on... I was almost not supporting the original motion because I thought it was too broad and it would take too much time. I'm looking for something a little bit more consolidated. But if we take a lot of time to get something more consolidated, then we're kind of defeating the purpose. So I don't think it's something that needs to be done by our next meeting, but I wouldn't want to kick it down the road too far, is my thought. I can certainly make it my priority that there's no... We can get it done.
I mean, I don't feel like it needs to be done in two weeks, especially with the other priorities that are, that, you know, have been longstanding out there. Is everybody else okay with that?
So, as long as we're not going months.
As long as it's not months, so.
Okay.
Before we close out this item, I would like to suggest that we do give one more direction to staff. And again, I don't know if this needs to be in the form of a motion, but to ask that they conduct a second traffic study on Milton Street and complete that by the end of this calendar year and get that to Public Works Board and to City Council so that then there's new data after the street is reconstructed to help us evaluate, you know, further evaluate traffic safety issues there. So does that need to be a formal motion?
No, I'll ask the staff to make sure it happens.
Okay. And then that would help give us more data to help us understand if we want to take some additional steps on Milton Street in the future. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for a long discussion, and thank you, property owners, for all the information that you've shared. So we are finished with that agenda item. Our last agenda item is announcements and recommendations for future agendas. So I think Drake just mentioned several that we will have, and we'll have the third reading on the ordinance that was on our agenda tonight. Announcement, Mary, do you want to make an announcement about the Parks Board public information?
Oh, yes, we have a public information session scheduled for Monday, June 23rd.
Third, I think.
June number third, 23rd. Let me double-check just to make sure. Yes, Monday, June 23rd, 5:00 p.m. here in this building. I believe it is down in the... I don't have the location, but I think it's down in the community center room on the first floor. And we will be discussing our, getting input and ideas on the recreation opportunities at Sandy Beach. It excludes parking lots and mobile home park, so it's just recreation and the fun place space we have. Oh, yes.
You might want to double-check with Rachel.
I thought she had this room booked.
Oh, it may be in this room. So if you, when you all come to give us ideas, just please note it may be in this room. I do not, I might not have the correct room, so thank you, Sam.
We have been...
It's in the building.
There has been a weekly scheduled Facebook post that has started over the last couple months denoting the meeting scheduled for the week.
Oh, okay.
And if they are outside of the council chambers, it does specifically mention where they're held. So that is something we've started doing to... Weekly to announce what's scheduled.
Okay, fantastic.
I'm scrolling quickly, but it's not coming up, so... But thank you.
Any other announcements or recommendations for future agendas?
I did see in Public Works their minutes that there was a change in the recommendation regarding bikes on Madison Street. I think we had someone ask a question when that was going to come to council a couple meetings ago. Now there's a change. Where are we standing on that?
We still have to amend the ordinances to bring the recommendation to the council. And then obviously, we would need a sponsor, I believe, for that ordinance. And so it's just been a matter of capacity to put that together.
Do you need a sponsor because it was a city council issue? The city council asked for that to be reviewed by...
No parking is mandated through ordinance in the city. So when you... When something... When a recommendation comes to change that, we have to show you where the amendment of the ordinance would need to take place.
Oh, so they are recommending parking be... I thought they were not recommending that.
I thought it was one side of the street.
One-way parking for a portion of it, sharrows. Dwayne, can you?
This is on Madison Street?
Too much into the details?
Yeah, I guess in general that, if I recall correctly, there is not enough roadway in order to have dedicated lanes, but there did need to be a change. I believe they did recommend a change in parking in order to safely incorporate the shero that they were recommending. And we'll have to review if installation of sharrows require an ordinance change as well. That's just what we've been trying to grapple with, to turn their recommendation into the form in which the council needs in order to be able to review their recommendation and take action on it if you so chose.
Okay, that's a great update.
We do have time.
I'll probably schedule a meeting with you and just talk about it a little bit more.
Great, yeah. And we do have time because Madison is a combination of chip sealing and milling overlays, and so that's going to continue throughout the summer and into the September, early-fall time period. It just... It has to be completed before the asphalt plants close.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.